Good morning, everyone. It's time for our 8 o'clock pre-agenda meeting. I will call the meeting to order. And at today's meeting, Commissioner Barbara A. Cox got the implication, and she also got the Pledge of Allegiance. Now, we need an approval of the minutes. And Mr. Honeycutt, do we have any adjustments to the agenda today?
We do have... Good morning, Mr. Chairman. We do have one budget amendment that we will add. It's number 159, that we will walk on. And Allison will go over that during her presentation on budget amendments. But that's the only thing that we have.
Okay. Special presentation?
Yes, sir. We have a motion to approve Farm City Week proclamation. Okay. And hopefully Kevin will be able to read that for us. And then, motion to approve the 2021 National Apprenticeships Week proclamation. And Craig Foote will be here for that.
Okay. In the Department of Commerce, Mr. Gurley?
Yes, sir. We have something.
Unfinished business.
Yes, sir. We have clarification on Board of Commissioners for rescinding mask mandate. Commissioner Foster asked for some clarification to make sure that everybody was clear about what departments and what departments were exempt, what departments were not.
During the meeting, we didn't say anything about exempt or anything.
Yes, sir.
And we just need to clarify that. The way you just worded it, I really didn't like that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just to be honest, we said no mask throughout any of the county buildings. Correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You've got the clarification?
We have... Also, Dr. Weiss and Dr. Stackhouse will be here as well if you have any questions. And I think I've sent out a lot of information yesterday as well from the CDC and from what we were able to find as far as specifics.
If possible, also, an unfinished business. I would like to speak on afternoon meetings again briefly. We could add that under unfinished business.
That's a board or a chair call on that.
Do what?
I was adding discussion of afternoon meetings. Commissioner Foster would like to have that discussed also under unfinished business.
I don't have a problem with it. Do y'all?
Yes, sir.
I'm good.
And then, we have our consent agenda. Number one is applications for elderly or disabled exclusion, which has been recommended and approved or recommended for approval by the Tax Department. Application for disabled veteran exclusion, again, reviewed and recommended for approval by our Tax Department. Number three, applications for present use value that is recommended and for approval by Tax Department. And then, number four is our budget amendments.
Okay. The budget amendments begin on page 22 of your agenda packet. Beginning with the Sheriff's Office, they have received Controlled Substance Tax Funds. We are requesting to roll those over. This is from the 2021 fiscal year, and they are requesting to roll those over into the non-capital supplies controlled substance line item. Since this is a reappropriation, that is why you see it coming out of fund balance. It's just a carryover from one year to the next. For the Sheriff's Office, you have a budget amendment for Controlled Substance Tax Funds in the amount of $4,145.44. So this is different than the previous budget amendment in that these are new funds received this fiscal year. You have a budget amendment for Goldsboro Wayne Transportation Authority. This is to anticipate and appropriate the rope funds. That stands for Rural Operating Assistance Program. We have received these funds historically and serve sort of as a pass-through to gateway. So the total amount is $245,691.
What does that stand for, ROP? I know what you just said, but what is that? Is that something that where they go out into the rural areas? It rural, it is.
Yep. Right. It's not for the urban areas within the city, it's for the areas outside the city.
If I turn over one more thing, I saw it going.
I was gonna say, and it is broken out into three different subcategories. You have your elderly and disabled transportation, employment transportation assistance, and rural general public program.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Your next budget amendment is for services on aging. This is to appropriate an increase in the Home Community Care Block Grant Funds. So we anticipated in the budget process the same amount being received as last year, but we've received an increase. And that total is an increase of $5,265. I don't see a subtotal here on this budget amendment, but that is what the total came to. You have a budget amendment for the 2122 Debt Project Fund. This budget amendment is to transfer funds totaling $81,450 for the DSS Health Program, not program, but for the new facility. This is to cover the pre-construction contract in the amount of $81,200, and then preliminary cost in the amount of $250, which was a zoning change requested from the City of Goldsboro. And these funds will be reimbursed from our debt proceeds once that debt is secured.
So what was the total amount here?
Now, the total at the bottom of that budget amendment is different because it has to go from one fund to the other. So that's governmental accounting at its best.
I was thinking, just figured out when they asked.
We have one for the detention center totaling $8,142. This is to adjust to increase funds to capital outlay. They are taking it from existing line items that were budgeted out of kitchen supplies and repairs and maintenance equipment. Their current food warmer cabinet is not working, and they've not been able to repair it, so they are requesting a new one. You have a budget amendment for solid waste in the amount of $37,670. This is to reallocate monies from office supplies, non-capital, to capital outlay equipment. So this was a purchase for, I believe it was some containers, and it was budgeted in the wrong line item. It should have been budgeted in capital, so we're asking to move that to capital. So it was a budgeted line item, just needed to be a different one. And then, the budget amendment that Mr. Honeycutt requested to be walked on, number 159, I gave you all a copy of. I have placed this in Office of Emergency Services totaling $32,000. This is to appropriate funds to purchase storage trailers. I believe specifically these would be used to house equipment, cots, things like that for storm aid and things like that.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to commend you and Commissioner Gurley for finding these trailers. We should have done this a long, long time ago.
Mr. A. Cox.
Okay. Welcome. He in contact. But we should have done this a long time ago, rather than storing it in a building, actually storing it in a trailer, and then you can dispatch it to it whenever you've got an emergency. The other interesting thing about that is these are refrigerated units. And the good thing about that is that they are sealed a great deal tighter, so you will not have moisture in those things going inside. So great idea.
And, you know, we had to act pretty quick on this, because I got a call on this on over on Friday? No, Tuesday. On a Tuesday night. And we went the next day and looked at them, and we actually, they were actually in better shape and built different than what we had anticipated. Because not only are they refrigerated, and the units are working on them, because we were cranking them up and renting them, which we won't be using the units that much, but it's there if we do need it. And the trailers, the kind that it had on, they actually had side doors on them and ramps on the back. So, I mean, we really looked out on finding something better than what we were looking for.
Great.
At a cheaper price than what we had anticipated.
No more of the questions on budget amendments. We'll go to number five. Motion to approve record retention and disposition scheduled records, general records schedule. This is a change with the statute that we're just kind of cleaning up. So I'll let Carol talk.
Sometimes every year, sometimes every three years, we receive notification from the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources that the retention schedule has had some changes and has to be adopted by the board or accepted by the board. The first one is general records retention schedule for all county governments. And then, the second one describes it individually for different departments. And so, that's what you have in your agenda, and you'll be approving that today. And then, I'll pass it out to the departments.
That would be number five and number six. Number seven is motion to adopt Resolution 2021-39 authorizing Wayne County to file for formal application for up to $500,000 for a building reuse for Project Barry. And again, this is through our economic development. We're filing for the grant on behalf of the project, so this is part of the incentive program through the state. And then, number eight, motion to adopt Resolution 2021-40 authorizing Wayne County to file for a formal application for up to $500,000 for a building reuse for Project KBTD. And again, that is a separate project, which is good news for us. So doing really well with economic development and projects moving forward.
And I'm looking here. Both of those require a 5% match on our part?
Yes, sir.
This standard of all?
Yes, sir.
Okay. New business?
Yes, sir. Presentation by Finance Director Allison Spade of Quarterly Financial Statement for the County of Wayne for 2021 through September 30th, 2021.
And Allison will do that?
Then, the second, presentation by Finance Director Allison Spade on Quarterly Financial Statement for the Wayne County Tourism Development Authority for fiscal year 2021, '22 through September 30th, 2021. Then, number three, motion to approve memorandum of understanding for the mobile library project. We do have Donna and Megan here as well. But very simply, as the board is aware, we were looking at, we received a grant for $50,000 to do a mobile library. And the thought process originally was that we were going to take an old ambulance and refurbish that. Well, once we got into the project, it was cost prohibitive for us to do that. It was just really cheaper for us to go out and get something new. So working through the foundation, the foundation is graciously, they're willing to come up with the difference in the cost. And so, the cost that'll be for the county is once we do sell the ambulance, the surplus, that money will go into this project along with the $50,000 grant. And then, the foundation will pick up the remaining cost for that. So.
Megan or Donna?
Right. We did put some money inside their CIP this year, but we will also move that over as part of this project. It really is a great project. I really do want to thank Donna and Megan and the work that she's done and the foundation has done, really stepping up to play huge in getting this done. But Donna, Megan, if you want to say something.
Okay. What is it going, I mean, what kind of vehicle? Is it a?
It's a van. It would be very similar to the mobile vaccine van that we received. It is a Mercedes van, but just to let people full transparency, however, that's what utility vans are mostly are now, are that type of vehicle.
Where they got a Mercedes engine in them.
Yeah. They'll have a little symbol in front.
And the use of this, is it going all the way around, all around the county, or is it?
Yes, primarily to serve the remote areas of our county where folks have wanted to access to library.
Donna, come up.
Yes. It will go all over the county. We're working now on just doing some preliminary planning for routes for this vehicle, but we know for sure it will go to remote areas of our county like Dudley, the Grantham area, where they don't have ready access to our public libraries. And we'll be able, we know that there are pockets in our county in particular where we can drive right into the community and provide services for children, for example, in the summer who can't get to a public library to participate in our summer reading programming. We're gonna have zoot doo, Wi-Fi on this vehicle, so we'll be able to go in. Our grant allows for a digital navigator, so that person will be traveling with us to these remote areas, so that we'll be able to address those broadband issues in our community.
Have we did a survey? Good morning.
Good morning.
Have we did a survey to see how it's going to benefit those communities?
Well, we will talk with the community members, because community members know best what they need and desire from our library services. So they will be a part of helping us to decide the services that they need.
Have we found out what the cost would be to operate it? You know, we know the grant, you know, that's wonderful, the grant, but what's gonna be the cost to operate it?
Not yet, Commissioner Williams, because we need to determine the routes that we will have. And once we make those decisions, then that will either allow us to expand or reduce the number of routes that we can take based on what our funding is.
I mean, I think it's great overall. I'd like to know, like, do you intend to be in each location 45 minutes in each location, or will it exceed 45 minutes?
Right. It'll be a variety of time schedules. In some cases, we will drive to assisted living communities, where we will go in and we will be able to offload carts of books and take in and work with the project managers at those centers to just actually deliver a collection of books that senior adults, for example, who can no longer drive to the library would be able to have access to. In other cases, we would drive to a community and be there for a set amount of time, probably more like the 45-minute schedule that you described. So it'll be a combination of those things. Yes, sir.
I'm hopeful that we won't forget about also the inner city.
Yes.
Because there's some areas in the inner city that could benefit from it.
Right.
You know, like especially, we have, you know, we have some housing complexes within the city of Goldsboro. And those housing complexes probably could benefit, you know, especially like the north end side of town. And, you know, when I was a kid, we had a library there, and they had no library there. And my biggest hope is that, since you guys are so great with the grants, that we can eventually find a grant to build a library in Dudley. I mean, I think a mobile library is super, but if we can have somewhere where, you know, is a brick and mortar that people can consistently have access to, I think is gonna really make a difference in those communities.
And yes, the library has wonderful community partners. We work very closely with our housing authority and other public housing communities, so they'll be a part of helping us plan routes, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And also, you know, it's been several years since we had a bookmobile, correct?
Yes.
And this, we have growing pains, but we'll work through them.
Absolutely.
I mean, you know, it's gonna kind of be a trial and error. I mean, you know, some of the things you think may work, may not, and some of the things you don't think will work will. So it'll be, it'll just be a learning experience for all of us to get that program up and running again.
Yes, sir.
Is this gonna be like a digital and primary book? I mean, so it'd be both?
Yes. Yes, absolutely. And we've designed this to really be a mobile learning center, if you will. So we can travel with our community partners. Let's say, for example, that we're going into a community where there's a high number of very young families with children who need information about how to get their children immunized, for example, or how to enroll them in the WIC program or something like that, then we could travel with some of our county partners, our other county departments, like the Health Department, Social Services. They could travel with us and take that information right into the community.
So we should be able to tag along with some of our broadband stuff? It's kind of good. Okay. Like a transmitter.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And then, number four is motion to approve CAD contract pending approval from the county attorneys and 911 board, an appropriate budget amendment. Very simply, what this is, if the old board remembers, and I think even Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Foster, Spillman, we had a contract with them about four or five years ago to look at an overall software system for dispatch through our jail retention. It was really taking you from dispatch to release. And it was really one system that we were looking at, because we felt like that it was more, there was a lot of having different systems, the systems did not speak to one another. So we looked for one system. So we tried Spillman. Spillman did not work, but we still kept a piece of Spillman in the CAD, which is really part of the mobile dispatch. But now, we've kind of worked it. We received some funds back from the settlement with Spillman, that we have an opportunity to finally change over to one solution that will have that overall umbrella that we were trying to get four or five years ago. So again, we're gonna be using the existing money that we have from Spillman that we have to use for this project, and there'll also be some 911 restricted funds that we're gonna use. But our attorneys are still looking, making sure everything's okay. I want to thank our 911 director, Chris Barnes. Chris has done a great job of working on this, and Ryan has done a great job, Sheriff's Department. This is kind of one of those projects that have been out there, and it's kind of been out there, so we want to kind of put a bow on this project.
So this, this program right here, this component right here will allow the city of Goldsboro and the county to kind of merge the systems together?
The software, yes, sir. That's what we originally tried to do with Spillman. And the county or the city also has some costs associated with it that they'll put in, because there was, they got a reimbursement as well from Spillman. So it's really trying to just fix what we didn't fix four years ago.
That's my only question. You sure this one's gonna work?
Yes, sir.
Okay. They said that last time. And I was at the city when we voted on it, and it was, you know.
The problem, I think, we have with the last one was data conversion. And the data conversion to the Spillman did not work, and it was just a pain. This, one solution that we have now, that's 90% of what we have, so it's just adding this one little piece back, which is their software.
What other counties or?
Johnson. Yeah, yeah.
They're all working, just working fine for them.
Yeah, it's working.
This guy already tells you exactly how many are on it.
Okay.
Yeah, in North Carolina, we have about 150 other PSAPs, 911 centers running the same software.
And also, just, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, this is gonna benefit more than just the Sheriff's Department of Law Enforcement. This is gonna, the 911 center is gonna enhance it for basically all of our first responder units, I mean, regardless of what's law or whatever. Primarily, it is for the sheriff, you know, but it's gonna, yes, sir?
Contract is written, as though it's with the Sheriff's Office. It's gonna be with the county.
Right.
First thing discussed.
But again, I gave you a very generic kind of, you know, I'm not a tech guy, but I hope I've given you, if I'm missing anything, somebody fill in the blanks. But this is really a good thing for us. This is very good, and it's using existing funds. Again, when we borrowed the money for Spillman, we had to use it for this project. So again, we're doing, we gotta use the money for this project.
So we're getting the refund or the refund that come back from Spillman to the city? We're getting all of it back, or that's going to this?
Right, yes, sir.
All of it?
Yes, sir. And the balance we're having to pick up, is that right? Balance should be through the 911 restricted, 911 restricted funds.
But until they tell you how much you can use, we can't really sign the contract.
Right. So that's what we're saying contingent upon. But again, I do want to thank staff. You know, this has kind of been a work in progress, and thanking them for getting us to this point as well. And no questions? Then we have County Manager's Report, Board of Commissioners Committee's Reports. Closed session. Again, after the closed session, we'll have a work session with Ms. Manning to go over the paying class revisions that we worked on with the Sheriff's Department, again, that we budgeted for, and we're looking at implementation January 1st.
Is that it?
That is it.
All right. We have time to go into closed session now, or?
Couple of things that you could discuss.
Right.
Right now, it would be to discuss the purchase of property and also to discuss expansion of businesses in Wayne County.
Okay. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Throw a move.
All in favor, just sign a right hand. Okay. If the audience would be kind enough to step outside, please, while we're in closed session.